I think we're ready to go.
Okay.
We good?
She comes over the crowd.
It does, always does.
Alright, let's do it.
Good evening. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. If you'd all still stand with me and do the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
If you'd please remain standing, we're gonna have Dane Edwards, youth pastor at Bastrop Christian Outreach Center, will be offering prayers this evening.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads and pray. Father, we're so grateful. Thank you so much, Lord, for the privilege and the honor we have of public assembly, being able to gather together, Lord, to be able to open in prayer, and to be able to celebrate all the great things that have been done this year. Lord, we thank you for your blessing on this time. We thank you for your guidance, your direction, your wisdom. And, Lord, we thank you for blessing all these teachers and all these young people as they come to the end of this school year. Lord, we just honor you and give you the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. First item of business tonight is to consider the adoption of an order canvassing returns and declaring the results of the bond election. Dr. Christy Lee, Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Edwards and Mr. Moore, Board of Trustees. Your places, you will see the summary report that I'm gonna provide to you tonight, as well as a complete report from the Bastrop County Elections Office of all of the results from the May 6th, 2023 election. In your summary report, I thought you might find it helpful to have the last two years of voter turnout information. So as you can see, our turnout this May for both the trustee and bond election was 11.65%. Last year, in 2022, it was 12.51%. We only had a board trustee election. And then in 2021, the last time we had a trustee and bond election, the voter turnout was 12.78%. Now on to the summary of results for trustee election. There were, for place three, a total of 3,107 votes, ballots cast. For place three, Billy Moore, 1,755 votes, 56.49%. The challenger was Thompson at 1,352 votes total, for 43.51%. So the candidate that the voters chose for place three was Billy Moore. For place four, there were 3,023 votes cast, 1,813 for Priscilla Ruiz at 59.97% and 1,210 votes for Greg Miller, which is 40.03%. So for place four, we have elected Priscilla Ruiz. For the bond election, Proposition A, there were a total of 3,419 ballots cast. There were 1,849 for ballots, which is 54.08% and 1,570 against ballots, which is 45.92%. So Proposition A passed by the voters on May the 6th, which we're very happy to report, and I would greatly appreciate a round of applause for all of the people who worked on the bond election, as well as all of the citizens who were engaged, whether they voted for or against the process. The important thing is that citizens were engaged in the action, and this is a huge, huge win for Bastrop ISD. Most importantly, it is a huge, huge win for students in Bastrop ISD and for all of the teachers and staff who have the privilege of working in this amazing district. So, thank you very much. I'm happy to take any questions about the election results if you have them.
Dr. Lee, I'd just like to thank you and Mr. Edwards and the cabinet and the administration team for educating our campuses, our teachers, our employees, and the community. I know y'all did a lot of presentations. They were during the evenings. Y'all put a lot of time and effort to educate everybody about these bonds, and so thank you for y'all's efforts. It's greatly appreciated.
It was a pleasure. Alright, thank you very much.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the order canvassing returns and declaring results of the bond election held on May 6th, 2023, as presented.
Second. Is there a motion? And a second, any further discussion? Being none, I call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we go to the canvassing. Wait, is this the same thing again?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to accept the canvas results of the BISD Board of Trustees election on May 26th, 2023, as presented.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? Being none, I call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the administration of oath of office for new board members. The presenter would be Judge Benton Askew.
Would you raise your hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully execute
I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office
The duties of the office
of school board trustee
Of school board trustee
for the Bastrop Independent School District
Bastrop Independent School District
of the state of Texas
State of Texas
and will
And will
to the best of my ability
To the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend
the constitution and laws
The constitution and laws
of the United States
Of the United States
and of this
And of this state.
So help me God. Thank you. I do solemnly
I do solemnly affirm
that I will faithfully execute
that I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of school board trustee
of school board trustee
for the Bastrop Independent Schools
for the Bastrop Independent School District
of the state of Texas
of the state of Texas
and will
and will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
constitution and laws
the constitution and laws
of the United States
of the United States
and of this state
and of this state. So help me God.
We'd like to invite Priscilla's family to come join her for the picture. The whole crew. We knew it took a village to raise Priscilla, so we're glad you all are here.
Thank you, Judge Askew. Our next item will be the reorganization of board leadership positions. At the first meeting after each election and qualification of board members, the members of the board shall organize by selecting a president, vice president, and secretary. I will entertain a motion of board leadership positions. The motion, I move to approve the board leadership positions to be reorganized as follows. I would like to nominate Ashton Mueching for president. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Vote. All four? Aye. Any against?
For the vice president, I would like to nominate Chris Dillon.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Take a vote. All four? Aye.
Aye.
Against? None. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Kelly Seacats as secretary.
The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. And no further discussion, and I'll call for a vote. All in? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion's carried. We're gonna play a little music to cheer it right now.
Alright, I had to bring my gavel back. And, Mr. Moore, thank you very much, Vice President a year ago, for stepping in. I definitely needed a break and took care of some family business and got re-energized, and thank you very much. You did an excellent job, and I appreciate the help.
Alright, this time, Mr. Edwards, would you introduce our student speaker for this evening, please?
Yes, that'd be my pleasure. Our student speaker for the character education trait for May is integrity. And I'm looking for Key Pumper Song. Is she back? Come on up. There she is. That's a great smile. Let me tell him a little bit about you, okay, Key? It says she's an eighth grader at Bastrop Middle School, and she's a member of the National Junior Honor Society, the BMS Student Council. She serves as the secretary. She's a member of the cheer team and soon to be JV cheerleader at Bastrop High School. Congratulations to you. She's also, go ahead, I'm sorry. She's also a proud member of the A Honor Roll, and in her spare time, she enjoys her gymnastics class and loves her dogs and cats. Welcome tonight, and thank you.
Similar to honesty and morality, integrity is the simple act of doing the right thing even when no one is watching. It is important to find integrity within yourself, your environment, and your peers, because being dependable, honest, reliable, and loyal heavily contribute to the character of someone who values integrity. While I sit in a classroom at Bastrop Middle School, I easily notice the people who value integrity as much as I do. In a school environment, stopping yourself from peeking over your friend's shoulder to get the last answer to a test, as easy as it may be, is integrity. Demonstrating integrity is as simple as doing your own work or staying on task when your teacher takes a step out of the room. Understanding the significance of integrity is vital to being a successful student. Every day as a leader, I find it most important to utilize my trait of integrity. I believe it is necessary to work hard in order to stay true to ourselves. It takes courage to wisely choose between what is wrong and what is right, but as you learn to incorporate the attributes of integrity in your life, you begin to become more trustworthy, dependable, accountable, and exemplified. All of this, in turn, directly impacts our success in life. In my personal life, valuing integrity helps me become a better friend to the people around me. Reassuring my peers that they can trust who I am is integrity, because I have the ability to prove that I am just as good of a person behind their backs as I am in front of their eyes. The bond I have with my friends is supported by the morals we share and strongly agree on. Not only does this help me grow as an individual friend, it allows me to build trust in the relationships I create. Integrity has taught me many valuable lessons, and they continue to shape me into a better person every day. Being in the leadership class has helped me understand the importance of integrity as well. I often find myself striving to be an influence on the people around me. As a leader, I can trust myself to be a great role model to my peers, as well as help them understand the importance of valuing this virtue alongside me. Appreciating integrity has allowed me to focus on my morals and strengthen my beliefs. Being integrous has brightened multiple aspects of my life and have changed my character for the better. My habits, friends, environment, morals, and ethics have been impacted by integrity, and I continue to better myself while applying this principle to my life routinely.
Key, we have a special gift for you for fulfilling us with that on integrity. And I also wanted to ask you, I noticed some people were here with you. Do you mind introducing, have them stand up and introduce them? They can stay right there. You can introduce them from there.
I have my dad with me, my sister, and my little brother.
I see dad, I see sister. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Alright, this time we'll move into special recognitions. We are moving Item 6 in the Special Recognization Section to first. Some of the VHS students, a principal, and board member need to attend the VHS Heroes Dinner tonight. Then we will proceed in order. Alright, so number one will be our top students from CIRCA, CCHS, and VHS, including valedictorian and salutatorian, Dr. Matt Wolfert.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Mr. Edwards. Thank you very much. I'm excited to get to introduce our high school principals, who are coming to introduce them to our distinguished Students of the Year. So first up will be Crystal Gabriel, Principal of Bastrop High School.
Before I begin, I want to say thank you so much for accommodating us. In May, you know that there are very few dates to arrange all the things and all the extras, so thank you all so much for altering your schedule tonight for us. To start, the 10 top students at Bastrop High School is who we're introducing tonight. Number 10 is Samara Allen Nice. And when I call your name, if you're here, if you'll please come to the front for me. Samara is the daughter of Gilbert and Sonia Salis. Samara will be attending the University of Texas and majoring in film. Our number nine student is Connor Dillon. Connor is the son of Chris and Chris Dillon. He will be attending Baylor University and majoring in accounting and finance. Luigi D'Amico is number eight student for Bastrop High School. Luigi is the son of Gesbi and Kathy D'Amico. He will be attending Texas A&amp;M University and majoring in engineering. Number seven student is Christina Salinas. Christina is the daughter of Gilbert and Rhonda Salinas. She will be attending Western New England University and pursuing a career in education. Adriana Martinez is the number six student for Bastrop High School. Her parents are Angel and Sylvia Martinez. Adriana will be attending Texas State University this fall. Number five is Shaylee Weldon Diaz. Shaylee is the daughter of Autumn Weldon. She will be attending the University of Texas and majoring in liberal arts to pursue a career in nursing. Grace Carter is the number four student for the class of 2023. Grace is the daughter of Jeffrey and Laura Carter. She will be attending the University of Texas and will pursue a career in speech pathology. Bastrop High School's number three student is Courtney Adams. Courtney is the daughter of Tandy and Alyssa Adams. She will be attending the University of Texas and pursuing a degree in television, radio, and film. And now for your salutatorian for the class of 2023 at Bastrop High School, Ms. Sophia Altamorano Newman. Sophia is the daughter of Sergio Altamorano and Sarah Newman Altamorano. She will be attending the University of Texas and majoring in biomedical science. And her 2023 valedictorian is Ashlyn Cadena. Ashlyn is the daughter of Louis and Tabitha Cadena. She will be attending Southwestern University and majoring in biology with animal studies. Congratulations. Please give one more round of applause for these amazing, amazing seniors at Bastrop High School. Thank you, Board, once again. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And if y'all will go out there for pictures, please?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Alright, now I'm excited to get to bring up Martin Conrady, Principal of Colorado River Collegiate Academy.
Well, good evening, Board. Very, very proud to be here this evening to announce our top five students. And as I do this, I need to put the disclaimer out. We don't get grades from ACC until the end of this week. So while I don't think things will change, they could at the very last second, because we do not have our last semester of grades yet from Austin Community College. Without further ado, then, our number five student for CIRCA is Benjamin Zhu. Ben is the son of Kevin Zhu and Xu Yan Zhao. Ben will be attending Texas A&amp;M University this fall and majoring in mechanical engineering. Our fourth student is Kaylee Fisher. Kaylee, come on up. Kaylee is the daughter of Larry and Miranda Farmer, and Kaylee will be attending Stephen F. Austin State University and majoring in business administration. Coming in at number three is Marley Henninger. Marley is the daughter of Mark and Sarah Smith. She will be attending the University of Mary Harden Baylor for nursing in the fall. The 2023 salutatorian for the Colorado River Collegiate Academy is Emily Etheridge. And Emily is the daughter of John and Holly Etheridge, and she'll be attending Austin Community College for music composition. And actually, I need to digress just here for a moment. Our top three students, Marley, Emily, and our salutatorian, Ava Kirkland, are all carrying 4.0s in their senior year. That's two years of college, folks, and I don't think any of them are going to relinquish it. So Ava, come on up here. Ava is our 2023 valedictorian. Ava is the daughter of John and Ginger Kirkland, and she will be attending Harding University this fall and majoring in computer engineering. Alright, apparently, here are our missing two. Ben, wave your hand. This is Ben Zhu. And then Emily, raise your hand. This is Emily Etheridge. And that is CIRCA's top 10%.
And finally, I'd like to bring up Casey Stagman, distinguished principal from Cedar Creek High School.
Thank you. What an honor it is to be here to announce our top 10 to you guys. So thank you. The number 10 student for Cedar Creek High School is Solomon Staples. Solomon is the son of Kenneth and Lanell Staples. He will be attending the University of Texas at Austin and majoring in computer science. He plans to get his cybersecurity certification. Our number nine student is Cody Pinkston. Cody is the son of Sky and Cheryl Pinkston. He will be attending Texas Christian University and majoring in computer science. Romero Vargas is the number eight student for CCHS. Romero is the son of Gilbardo and Lucia Vargas. He will be attending the University of North Texas and majoring in music, education, and vocal performance. Romero plans to become an opera singer and return back to teach at the high school. Cedar Creek's High School number seven student is Brant Seagraves. Brant is the son of Drew and Jennifer Seagraves. He will be attending Texas A&amp;M University and majoring in kinesiology to pursue becoming a physical therapist. Amanda Dyson is the number six student. She is the daughter of Steve Dyson and Emily Haas. Amanda will be attending the University of Texas at Austin with a major in chemical engineering and plans to develop medicine to help cure cancer. Our number five student is Jordan Matous. Jordan is the daughter of John Matous and Kitten Franks. She will be attending West Texas A&amp;M, where she will major in animal science for pre-veterinary medicine. Antonio Gonzalez is the number four student for the class of 2023. Antonio is the son of Maurice and Lydia Gonzalez. He will be attending the University of Texas at Austin and plans to pursue a career in video gaming production. The number three student is Amy Louie. Amy is the daughter of James and Elizabeth Louie. She will be attending the University of Texas at Austin and majoring in biology with a focus on pre-med. She plans to become a pediatrician. And the salutatorian for Cedar Creek High School class of 2023 is Olivia Seguin. Olivia is the daughter of John and Dana Seguin. She will be attending the University of Texas at Austin, where she will major in government and plans to become an environmental lawyer. And Cedar Creek High School's valedictorian is Michael Svetlik. Michael is the son of Charles and Jennifer Svetlik. He will be attending Texas Tech University and majoring in electrical engineering. Congratulations.
Alright, moving along here, we'll go to the VHS Fine Arts Dance Team and Color Guard. Chico Portilla, Director of Fine Arts.
Good afternoon, Board. Mr. Edwards, thank you again for making time to acknowledge some of the great things and achievements of our students and our teachers. Our first group to be recognized tonight is the Bastrop High School Dance Team. I want to bring up their director, Ms. Cara Pasquale. She'll bring her kids. Come on, kids.
Yeah, you can stand in front of us. There you go. Turn it out. There you go. Perfect.
Y'all take a better picture than we would.
Make us look good.
That's right.
Good evening, Dr. Edwards.
Good evening, Dr. Edwards and the BISD School Board. My name is Cara Pasquale and I'm the proud dance director at BHS. We had an amazing spring semester. We started off competing in February in Bryan and Cedar Creek and won numerous awards on choreography, technique, and entertainment. Additionally, in March, we had our spring show, which we celebrated all our dance routines and hard work. Here with me today are the twenty-three, twenty-four Dance and Social Officers. Ladies, would you please give our BISD Board a Honey Bear hello? I'm incredibly proud of the Honey Bear's hard work, countless hours of dedication, and servant leadership. And thank you to my wonderful principal, Ms. Gabriel, and Fine Arts Director, Mr. Portillo, for always supporting us. And of course, thank you to the BISD School Board and Mr. Edwards for supporting the Fine Arts in Bastrop ISD. Thank you.
Cedar Creek here?
No, we...
One more, color guard. All right, there we go.
If I could have Ms. Garnet Gilbert come up, we'll recognize her awesome state qualifying color guard.
Awesome. Good evening, I am Garnet Gilbert, the head director of Guards at Bastrop High School. Thank you so much, School Board members and esteemed guests and colleagues. This is the varsity color guard at Bastrop High School. We have two teams. We have a JV and a varsity. And the varsity this year made district history by qualifying for Winter Guard International Finals at the San Antonio Regional. We went on to win every single competition that we went out for, including winning area and qualifying for state championships, where we won gold, or bronze, rather. We tried gold, but we won bronze. So we have these medals. We love to wear them. I have been doing color guard, directing color guard for over twenty years. And this is my third medal, so it's very, very difficult to do. These are thirteen of our sixteen medalists here. And we're extremely proud of them and we want to push to grow the program. And thank you so much for all of your support. And the parents especially, and these wonderful, talented kids. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Great job. Thank you. All right, does that move us along here to Cedar Creek High School, to the Fine Arts, the Dance Team, and the Ballet Folklorica?
Right, I'd like to now bring up to the podium Ms. Senna Robbins, the director of the Dance Program at Cedar Creek High School.
Okay, hi, my name is Senna Robbins and I direct the Eaglelet Drill Team and have some current members here with me today. In addition, I also direct the Firebirds Hip Hop. And for two years now, we've also done the Creek Rhythm Ensemble, which is, we march with a band. So a couple of the members are part of that as well. We started two thousand and twenty-three with an amazing opportunity to perform at the University of Texas at the Dance Team Winter Show. So that's the picture you have up there. So we were the only high school that was invited to dance with the UT Dance Team, so that was really fun. In February, we competed at the Dance Line Competition at Rutter High School. And among several teams, we placed first in military, modern, lyrical. And we got an artistic expression award for Team Lyrical. And we also got grand champions. So that was really awesome amongst all the teams. That next weekend, we got overall grand champions. So we competed at the Ascension Dance Competition at Westwood. So we placed first in all of our routines. We also received Challenge Elite, which means we were the top scoring, one of the top scoring teams at that competition. We also hosted this year. So we hosted seventeen drill teams at our high school. And we have a first-place soloist, Marissa Gonzalez. A first runner-up soloist, Selena Afala. And then we also had a first-place duo. It was really exciting, and they were really excited about that. And then in March, we traveled to Katy, Texas. And we competed at the Ascension State Competition, where all the drill teams in the state came and competed. We got first runner-up in military, palm, and modern. We placed first in lyrical and we also got the highest in the category, based like regardless of classification. So that was really exciting. And then we ended our season at the University of North Texas. We competed at the National Drill Team Competition. We got seventh overall in small team. And also, we got third runner-up for our team, modern. So we did a lot this year. We went local, state, and nationals. So our team motto this year was "Together, we stand, divided, we fall." So I contribute our success to all of that because that's what they did. And they worked really, really hard together. In the fall, we do have a dancer going to Blinn, an alumni Eaglelet. So she will be dancing at Blinn College for the fall. So I'd like to thank you guys for letting us present. And hopefully, you'll be able to share our accomplishments again in the future. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Great job.
Next, I'd like to bring to the podium Ms. Sarah Limone, who's the director of our wonderful Cedar Creek Ballet Folklorica program. And Mr. Ivan Ramirez, new to our district and is here to help Sarah.
Good evening. We'd like to, first of all, can you hear me? We'd like to thank the district, obviously, for your support, as well as our campus administrator for supporting our program. Tonight, I have the pleasure of recognizing our program. And I'd like to talk just about four different things. The first thing that I'd like to bring to light is our academic success this year. We had one team maintain one hundred percent academic eligibility throughout the whole school year. Our top three teams maintained a ninety-eight percent academic eligibility throughout the school year. So that's a really big accomplishment for us. The other thing that I would like to talk about really quick is just the program's character. It's their hard work. It's their motivation that gets us anywhere. And then the next thing that I'd like to recognize is the people standing in front of us. You're looking at some of our finest leaders in the program, like our top leaders, people who really help us become better. And so I'm recognizing all of y'all. And then, and then last but not least is just what are your look like during our competition season? Four out of our five performance competition teams brought trophies home. In our last competition, our two group entries that we took tied for first place, scored one hundreds. We were the top of performance for the competition for the high school entries. We also competed in an open division. And so what that means basically is we're competing against people that have a lot more experience than us in a lot of cases. So we competed in an open division. There were seven private companies, three high school teams, and we took first place. It's a very huge honor. Not only did they take first place in this open category, but that entry was named like the winner of the competition. There was three hundred entries. It's two and a half days. So they did awesome. And again, it just goes back to student leaders and it goes back to hard work and motivation. So it's them. So good job, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Great job.
Great job.
All right, moving along here to Bastrop High School Athletics. Academic All-State, girls soccer area, powerlifting regionals, and track regionals. Leslie Rangel, is she with us tonight? All right. Here she comes. All right. She's our BHS Assistant Athletic Coordinator. I know ten years ago, we were working on a bigger room. It looks like we're gonna need to work on a bigger room again here to get everybody in here. Y'all come on in. Ms. Rangel, the podium's all yours. Come on up. Coach Mayberry, good to see you.
Hi, everybody. I'm here to talk about our Bastrop High School girls soccer team, girls powerlifting team, and our senior athletes that made Academic All-State this year. I'll go ahead and start with that. I know Coach Greedle was here earlier in the year and talked about our fall athletes. So after we finished all of our seasons, we had over fifty seniors qualify for Academic All-State this year, which is an amazing accomplishment. Having a four-year GPA of ninety-two or above, I believe, for THSCA, ninety-four or above for TGCA. So very proud of all of those athletes. The next group I just want to talk about real quickly is our girls powerlifting team. Coach Harlan couldn't be here, so he just gave me a little thing to read. It says, "The girls competed well this year and three girls qualified for regionals." He's very proud of these girls for getting up so early every morning and coming to workouts at six-thirty a.m. All of the hard work paid off with Grace Sagabill, Hannah Sagabill, and Betsy Herrera qualifying for regionals. Grace Sagabill also qualified for the state meet, which was held in Fresno in March. Grace competed very well, and Coach Harlan could not be more proud of her. She will be attending Texas A&amp;M Kingsville this fall and has recently signed with them to lift on their powerlifting team. Our girls soccer team also had a great season this year. We finished district in fourth place and then went on to defeat the number-one team in the district opposite of us to become bi-district champions this year and make it to the area qualifying round. I am incredibly proud of our girls. Like, we have steadily progressed over the years with these seniors. Their first year, we would have qualified for postseason, but COVID got our season. The second year, we made it to the postseason and we were beaten pretty decisively. Last year, we made it and we lost in double overtime. And this year, they made it over that hump and we made it to the next round. I believe it's the first time since we have moved into the 5A Division that our girls have qualified for the area round. So we are very proud of them. And I'm gonna let Coach Mayberry come up and speak about our track program.
Coach, while you're coming up, can you raise your hand if you play soccer? All right, congratulations. And then what about powerlifting? There we go. All right, awesome. Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Mayberry. I'm the head track coach in Bastrop. The very proud head coach in Bastrop. And I would like to give a special shout-out to our following seniors who did a great job with our track program going to regionals. They was our leaders. They led with hard work. They led with taking over. And I just couldn't have done it without them. Jaden Carter, who went to regionals in the hundred, she finished sixth place. Raise your hand up, Jaden. They can see who you are. Grace Sagabell, who competed in the shot put. And Cole Wilder, who competed in the one-ten and three-hundred hurdles. Cole and Grace both made the regional three years in a row. They would have made it as a freshman, but COVID got us, so they didn't make it as a freshman. Very proud of them. As well as Cooper Lovelace. Where's Coop? Coop Lovelace competed in the discus for the first year. And Taylor Gonzalez, who also did soccer, but also ran track for us, competed in the four-by-one and the four-by-two. Thank you, seniors. You know, you will be missed. At the same time, I'm very excited about our young, young athletes coming up in our track program that's ready to get it going. We went to regionals this year and they made it in all three relays on the girl's side. Four-by-one, four-by-two, and the four-by-four. And those young ladies is Carly Van Clark. Carly, get your hands up. Victoria Hickman. Yasli Anne Matos. Kaylee Aladula. Jillian Stotter. And Olivia Altamorino. Also in the discus was Zamara Bunyan. She made it in discus. And our boys is Jayden Michaels, now here, made it in pole vault. And Levi Nichols made it in the two-hundred. Again, these young athletes. Also, all our seniors that are just called out also made All-State, Academic All-State. So that's great. And half our kids on our track team made Academic All-District. So I'm very proud of them. Can't wait for next year. Got a young team, ready to get it, and excited and ready to get it going. Thanks a lot.
Hey, Coach Mayberry, for you run off. How many years have you been here at Bastrop ISD?
Twenty-nine years.
Twenty-nine years.
Twenty-nine years.
I tell you, I see excitement for another ten.
I'm excited. I'm excited. I'm still excited. It still runs through my blood. So I appreciate it. Thanks for everything you guys do.
Yes, sir. All right, moving along here to Cedar Creek High School Athletics. Athletic All-State, powerlifting, regionals, track, regionals. Erica Clay here, CHS Assistant Athletic Coordinator. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. Just gonna hold that right there. Thank you for having me speak today, you guys. I'm Erica Clay. I haven't had the pleasure to meet everybody yet. But I'm the Assistant Athletic Coordinator over at Cedar Creek High School. I'm also the head girls basketball coach and co-head track. I have a lot of duties at that campus. And so I try to make sure that I put my best foot forward in everything that I do over there and represent our campus very well for this district. Right now, I'm gonna be speaking about a few of our sports here. Of course, not a lot of our kids were able to make it due to work duties. And so I'm gonna just kind of push through this with some of the coaches that I do have here available today with us. So first, I want to start off with our softball program coached by Coach Wilson, who's here today. We had the pleasure of having our first student athlete, Olivia Seguin, who's also our class salutatorian. She actually made first team this year for her program. And this was actually her first year to make varsity for softball. We also have Amanda Dyson, who made second team. Nahajni Black, and also our other athlete, Karina Mata, who all four were Academic All-State athletes for her softball program. They represent us very, very well. And did a great job with the numbers that she had. You know, with everything happening shortly with some of the athletes. But for the most part, our softball team did great. We also have, moving forward with our baseball program, we had three of our athletes also Academic All-State. We have Declan Ward, first team. Ethan Keena, second team. And Brant Seagraves, who was here earlier as well, second team. Those guys did a great job this season under Coach Hoffman. And then we're gonna also move forward with our powerlifting team. They did really well this season. One thing I can say with Coach Brooks, he did a phenomenal job. Our numbers weren't great these past couple of years, but this year, he did a phenomenal job with boosting those numbers, especially on the girl's side. I know not a lot of the young ladies are into powerlifting, but Coach Brooks did a great job with recruiting girls and having them come onboard and join the program. And so, I mean, from, I think we had about seven last time. We're at thirteen this year and more interested coming in next year. And then the boys' side did great as well. For his program, we have five ladies that made it to regionals. We have Jordan Matas, Maricela Natal, Montana Davenport, Eunice Ramos, and Annika Gustafson. Those ladies did phenomenal this year. And then we also have our elite Academic All-State with his program, which was Dakota Davenport and Jordan Matas as well. I mean, I can't say enough about Coach Brooks. He helped me when I was here my first year. This is my third year at Cedar Creek. He's always made sure he extended helping hands in anything that I needed there. And he does the same things for those kids there. But also, just moving forward with our track team. Today I have here, I have Nathan Irvin and Tucker Fitzhugh. If you guys can stand up really quickly. So, yes, so this was my first year to actually co-head track. I mean, track is in my family. My brother runs professionally, so I take a lot of notes in and make sure that I try to help and apply it to my. to help and apply it to my kids. And so, I kinda approach it with the same tenacity that I do with basketball. I coach my kids hard, and I love them hard. And these two gentlemen, along with, well, Tucker Fitzhugh, Nathan Irvin, I have Dakota Baker, Seth Staples, and Ivan Lopez. I mean, we did amazing. We had four meets prior to district, whereas probably everybody else had maybe seven to eight. And we did what people do in eight meets and four, you know. And so, that's amazing. These young gentlemen not only broke the school record twice, they broke their own record, right? Tucker broke his brother's previous record with his relay group. And then, once we broke that record, they ran 43-49 the first time at area, and, you know, the guys were just pumped up. And I told them, like, hey, man, y'all can do it. You can do it. This is the first time in school history that our boys relay 4x1 has made it that far to regionals. And once we got to regionals, the guys competed as well as they can. Like I said, we only have four meets, and for us to make it to regionals and then break the record again, running 43-24 at regionals, I think they did a phenomenal job, and I'm so proud of them. Tucker, thank you for helping me restart this program. Nathan, I mean, that's the fastest kid in our school right now. If it wasn't for injury, that kid will probably be running like a 10-2 right now. So I'm excited to have him coming back and running for us and representing Bastrop ISD, you guys. Thank you so much.
Just right quick, if you could, I noticed we got Coach Hoffman. Do we have some other Cedar Creek coaches in the house? And would the coaches or the parents please stand to some other students? Here we go, we gotta just wave. Thank you very much for being here. Great job. Thank y'all very much. Y'all can all take one big group picture out in the forum if you'd like. So they'll be coordinating the photographs out there. So thank you for coming. It means a lot. All right, moving along here to earned industry-based certifications. Avery Maria, Career and Technical Education Coordinator.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor of presenting and recognizing some really special students and instructors from our CTE programs of study. So if you are a student or an instructor who helped prepare students for an industry-based certification, please come up and stand by the dais. We'd love to recognize you while we go through this. This year, to date, today, we still have some testing going on. We have over 60 students that have earned an industry-based certification. What is an industry-based certification? It is the opportunity for a student to either take a test, do a performance, exhibit skills and abilities to help them earn a certification that's recognized by an industry professional. So the certifications that you see over the next several screens are TEA-approved, industry-based certifications. They are vetted through multiple different levels, the most important level being industry. And so, industry representatives frequently say, "If I saw a student that's going to come in front of me, whether to interview or even turns in an application or resume, if I see one of these certifications on there, I know that they have had the ability to show the skills that they've learned." They learn the skills and the content through our Career and Technical Education Programs of Study. So over 60 so far to date, and we've got testing going on through the end of school and even into summer. So what I'd like to do is I'm simply going to read the name of the certification and the instructor's name, and they help prepare our students get ready for these exams. So we do offer the Non-Commissioned Private Security Officer Level 2. That program was offered at Cedar Creek High School. Mr. Brian Spires was our law enforcement, is our law enforcement teacher there, and he helps students prepare. Also at Cedar Creek High School, we offer the NCCER Core Certification. Mr. Michael Gilligan and Mr. Andrew Buckler, our construction teachers, help prepare students for that certification. We offer a Ducks Unlimited Ecology and Conservation Management, also at Cedar Creek High School, and Mr. Chad Gertz is our agriculture teacher that helps prepare students. Equine Management also offered at Cedar Creek High School, and Ms. Sierra Good recognizes and helps those students. Same with Fundamentals of Animal Science. Over at Bastrop High School, we have an amazing automotive technology program. We have students that are earning their ASE certifications. Mr. James Cunningham and Mr. Derek Headley are the automotive teachers that help with that program. We have another really strong program in Agriculture Mechanics, and we've had students that have earned their AWS D1.1 and D9.1. And those are actual welds, and their welds are inspected by a certified welding inspector, and then they are granted that certification. It is not an easy thing to do, and Mr. Jacob Kessler is our agriculture teacher who's helped them through that process. We also have some folks that have earned their Certified Veterinary Assistant Certification, and Ms. Rachel Hamby is our agriculture teacher that helps get them ready. Finally, we also have some students that are going into the medical field. They may enter as a Certified Clinical Medical Assistant. Both campuses have this program, and to date, we have students from both Cedar Creek and Bastrop High School that have earned this. Ms. Megan Gaddis and Ms. Annette Harrison have helped students through the program. Same with Certified Pharmacy Technician, Megan Gaddis and Annette Harrison. And then, this is a great certification, our Educational Aid 1 certification. So in the state of Texas, we have, and hire, hopefully, educational aides or teachers' aides. And so, we are excited to have students who have completed the teaching and training program through our district, through their coursework, and they are in the process of earning the Educational Aid Certification. And so, Emily Soto is our Education and Training Teacher over at Cedar Creek, and she has worked with these students this year. It's an honor to recognize the students as well as the instructors. Thank you very much for all the support that you provide Career and Technical Education in Bastrop ISD.
All right, this time, we will recognize our Paraprofessional of the Year, including District Elementary and Secondary Paraprofessional of the Year, Dr. Matt Wolford, the Associate Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you. I'm excited to get to come and share some of Bastrop's best with you right now. I know in our audience, we have some of our winners, so if you were a campus recipient of one of our Paraprofessionals of the Year, if you'll come up and stand with us as I announce you, I'd really appreciate it. So each year, our campuses and the service centers select the Paraprofessional of the Year, and these fine professionals that you have right in front of you were selected. And so, we have Bridget Rosenhauer from Bluebonne Elementary School, Patricia Neely from Cedar Creek Elementary School, Jennifer Porres from Emile Elementary School, Haley Thompson from Los Pines Elementary, Ariely Ruder from Mina Elementary, Brittany Bacon from Red Rock Elementary, Roth Udavi from Bastrop Intermediate, Jessica Garza, Cedar Creek Intermediate, Laura Bowen from Bastrop Middle, Angie Riggins from Cedar Creek Middle, Ruben Hernandez, Bastrop High, Yucenia Rodriguez from Cedar Creek High, Patricia Parks from Circa Genesis, Doug Desche from Gateway, and Guadalupe Rubacala, I'm sorry, Guadalupe, Guadalupe Rubacabla from the Service Center. So let's give them all a round of applause, please. And we selected two, one from the elementary and one from the secondary, as our District Paraprofessionals of the Year. And so, Bridget from Bluebonne was selected as the Elementary Paraprofessional of the Year. Bridget? And Angie from Cedar Creek Middle School was our District Secondary from Middle School. Congratulations to you all, and thank you for all y'all do for our district.
Tell us about the teachers of the year, including District Elementary, Secondary, Rock Star, Rookie Teacher of the Year, please.
Yes, sir. And we have some amazing teachers in our district, so these, again, are the cream of the crop for this group. So if you are one of our Teachers of the Year from the campus, you will come up for us, please, at this time? All right, so from Bluebonne Elementary School, we have Courtney Grafton. From Cedar Creek, we have Erica Nutal. From Emile, we have Gabrielle Torres. From Los Pines, we have Anna Cox. From Mina, we have Samantha Biddle. From Red Rock, we have Michelle Mathis. From Bastrop Intermediate, we have Emily Whitehart. From Cedar Creek Intermediate, we have Jamie McDaniel. From Bastrop Middle, we have Madeline Leonard. From Cedar Creek Middle, we have Katie Rogan. From Bastrop High, we have Grace Springs. From Cedar Creek High, we have Sarah Lamont. From Colorado River Collegiate Academy, we have Addie Lopez-Robales. From Genesis High, we have Katerina Sturka. And last but not least, from Gateway, we had Von Elwood. So with an incredibly difficult decision in front of us, we had to select from these amazing teachers, one from the elementary and one from the secondary, and we're excited to announce that from our elementary, Bluebonne, I'm sorry, I'm looking right at your name right here, Courtney Grafton was selected as our Elementary Teacher of the Year for the district. And for our secondary, it was Grace Springs from Bastrop High. Thank you again for all y'all do. We know all the hours you put into this. Thank you for your family, if any of them are here. Can we give them a round of applause, too? We celebrate with you, so please feel free to go out and take a picture for us. And last but not least, being a new teacher is incredibly hard, so we have two amazing rookie rock stars. So if you were one of our rookies, if you'll come up? Okay. So for our elementary rookie rock star rookie of the year, we had Joseph Sai from Emile Elementary School. And for the secondary rock star rookie of the year, we had Francis Ramirez from Bastrop Middle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all for y'all's dedication and hard work. We really do appreciate it and all the family support there. Thank you for coming this evening. All right, a lot of great things going on here at Bastrop ISD, and it was really great to see all those, definitely fine arts and athletics and all the extra things we do definitely make a difference. It was great to hear about all those academic successes throughout the year so far. All right, this time, we'll move into our open forum. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone that has signed up or wishes to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so at this time. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on the agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion to the issue until the appropriate time during the meeting. At no time will the Board entertain questions from the audience and ask that all audience be respectful of other speakers and presenters. The Board will not allow the use of any derogatory comments toward any individual staff members, teachers, or board members. The Board has adopted complaint policies that are designated to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents may be heard in accordance with policy FNG Legal and FNG Local. We will be taking speakers in the order at which the requests were received. We allow 30 minutes for open forum, and we have one speaker signed up to speak this evening. Therefore, each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. With us tonight is Rick Nunez to talk about food service contract, the Airmark partnership. Rick, thank you for being here.
Good evening. Just saying, board members, Superintendent Edwards, again, my name is Rick Nunez. I'm here tonight. I'm a district manager with Airmark. I've had the privilege to work with this school district for a few months while we're in transition, and our DM, and I am here just to thank you for the partnership. It's been almost two years. We appreciate being a part of Bastrop ISD and the community. I'd also like to mention our team, Jessica Johnston, our general manager, and her staff, and our cafeteria staff who do all the work. And they have done a phenomenal job over these last couple of years, and I want to thank them for all of that. Some trying times, supply chain issues, inflation, and they've always put a good product on the line, give choices to our students, and I really thank them for that. Again, we appreciate it. Our region appreciates it. We're just down the road. We're not far from here. So if y'all ever need us again, and I know we're still making a decision tonight, but I just want to take this opportunity, and I do appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
All right, this time, this will conclude our open forum, and that takes us into Superintendent's Report and Board Discussions. The curriculum report is for information only. This brings us to the budget report and a budget update. Dina Edgar, our Chief Financial Officer, I take it, has some exciting news for us.
Mr. Edwards, border trustees, it's really hard to follow all of these recognitions and celebrations with this exciting update on the budget development process for 23-24. So with that, okay, so we are in our final two weeks of the 88th legislative session. I have outlined here some key dates as we move into the end of May. The voucher bill was discussed yesterday with numerous changes through a House Committee substitute bill that Governor Abbott wasn't very pleased with. We're hearing that he has threatened to veto this bill and pull legislators back into special session this summer unless the bill gets broadened and more, you know, inclusive, if you will. The end of this week will be the last day for the House to consider local House bills. Next Wednesday will be the last day for the House to consider Senate bills and joint resolutions. Two days after that will be the last day for the House to act on any Senate amendments before midnight. Then on Sunday, May 28, the Senate must agree on the House amendments that came out. And then the last day of regular session will be May 29. So a lot going on these next couple of days, couple of weeks, and all while we're waiting for decisions coming out of the session, some outcomes, we are putting together our budget development exceptions, including a 3.3 increase to ADA. We have received those preliminary property values from the Central Appraisal District, and when comparing the preliminary value to the July certification of the prior year, we're looking close to 20% increases in property values. So under current law, we would decrease the MNO tax rate by about eight pennies this year from .8546 to .7746. Now, we do expect to see further compression. We expect to see increases to home sentence exemptions and property value growth caps. So what that's gonna look like remains to be seen. We're just monitoring the decisions that will be made. So regarding compensation modeling, each 1% raise will cost about $900,000. So we have a priority to do everything we can to provide ultra-competitive compensation packages going into this next budget. So that is a priority. New positions for growth are totaling approximately $4.6 million. Keep in mind, we are opening two new schools. And then we've built in a plan to increase substitute pay rates by about $13 a day. Some other considerations include the Consumer Price Index increase in our transportation contract, and that came in at 5.2%. We expect an increase to the healthcare pricing. We'll get that at the end of May. They're also waiting for outcomes of the legislative session, so they won't have that until some decisions are made in that regard. We do expect increases to property casualty insurance, and we are looking at about 30%. Of course, other inflation on goods and services continue. We did receive the estimate of about a 7% increase on the Central Appraisal District budget, and that is also included in your board packet under information items this evening. So I mentioned earlier that we received the preliminary property values from the Central Appraisal District in late April. This chart does display adjusted, freeze-adjusted certified values for taxes 2015 through 2022, and then that last bar is your preliminary certified value. What you're seeing here is the 20% is the $7.1 billion in the prior year compared to the $8.6 billion. Again, we'll get the certified values on July 25. So moving into some revenue modeling, we have some information, some outfits that we subscribe to, partners that we subscribe We have some information, some outfits that we subscribe to, partners that we subscribe with, come out with some modeling, so we're showing this here tonight. The left column is current law, and that basic allotment is 6,160. The total revenue on the current law is 122.6 million. The middle column is a House Bill 100 model that, that came from TASBO that has the $90 increase to the basic allotment as well as the additional penny of levy that will be offered at the board with just board approval. So that comes in at about $5.4 million more than current law. And then in the right column, we have a model that was run by the Equity Center that moves all of the school finance set aside money into the basic allotment, and this is the most favorable model. It has an increase of about 6.6 million over current law. The probability of it all going into basic allotment is probably not likely, but, but they did have the model, so I wanted to show you. After factoring in though, all those variables that I just discussed, it's still going to be a tightly balanced budget because those, those take up a lot of the room. So looking ahead to budget and tax rate adoption, we do have a lot of work to do in a very short amount of time after we hear what's coming out of the legislative session. We plan to run our notice of public meeting on June 2nd. We will adopt the budget on June 20th, and I believe that we're planning to have a budget workshop prior to that. The deadline to adopt the budget is June 30th, though. We'll receive those certified values on July 25th. After that, TEA will issue the preliminary maximum compressed tax rate, the MCR. That'll happen in August, then we'll turn right around and present our proposed tax rate at the August board meeting. So very tight, very compressed timeframe. We'll hold, we'll meet and hold the public, public hearing to adopt the tax rate in September. And that is what I have for you this evening. Are there any questions?
I have a question. A couple of slides back when you had, maybe it was the last slide where you had the, yes. Does this include the increased teacher pay that they're talking about? Or is that separate, the one-time?
The, um, no, this, that was a Senate Bill 9.
Okay.
And this is, so House Bill 100 was really the vehicle that we thought was moving forward. I will tell you, it has stalled. So all my peers and everyone was modeling House Bill 100, and we knew there were going to be some modifications to it, but it has stalled. So we're not sure what's happening. I think the voucher bill is playing a role in that as well. But Senate Bill 9 is the, is the one with the, with the raise, yeah, the one time. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for tracking all that. I know it's a lot of, lot of fun. All right, moving along, the Administrative Services and Human Resource Reporter for information as well as Operations Report Chief, we always like it nice and quiet on the Police Department report. Appreciate what you're doing. Thank y'all getting ready for some training this summer, is that correct? All right, and then on Communications and Community Relations, that's for a report only. That moves us into the consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Why do we have a motion? We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. All right, this time we move into our action items. We'll consider approval of interlocal agreement between BISD and the city of Bastrop, Texas. Dr. Lee, Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you. So in your board packet is a copy of that interlocal agreement. So this essentially allows the city and the school district to cooperate on specifically the Bastrop High School bond projects. What we learned through discovery is that there were some, uh, we didn't have all of the documentation that we needed. The county did not related to the ownership of the property. So, and, which is required to do plating of that property, which is required to complete the bond projects. So this agreement with the city allows us to extend the timeline, timeline in order to complete that plating to 18 months, which is plenty of time. In fact, I think we're just about done with it already. And then on our side, what we've agreed to do with the city is to cooperate on a traffic study that they are in the process of completing right now. And essentially, we have already provided them with data, and we are meeting with them on a regular basis to see what we can do to help the city in improving traffic flow around our schools. So this is just a, a cooperation agreement on those two things. Are there any questions?
All right, if there are no questions, I move to approve the interlocal agreement between Bastrop ISD and the city of Bastrop, Texas as presented.
Second.
You have a second? Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Lee. This time we'll consider approval of the bank depository contract. Dina Edgar.
Again, a school district must have a depository contract into which the Texas Education Agency can deposit funds for the district. The district must choose a depository either by bid or request for proposal. Seven banks within Bastrop ISD boundaries were invited to submit a bid for the, for the bank depository services. Two bids were received on March 23rd, one from First National Bank of Bastrop and the other from Classic Bank. This evening, we are recommending to award the depository contract to First National Bank of Bastrop.
For discussion, I will be abstaining on this vote. Please note that, Ms. Secretary. Any other discussion from the board? This time I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve awarding the contract for bank depository services to First National Bank of Bastrop as presented.
Oh, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and one abstain. All right, thank you. This time, we'll consider approval of food service management company contract number BA 04-2023. Ms. Edgar.
On February 1st, we solicited proposals for food service management services for the 23, 24 school year. Responses received on March 10th from Airmark, Chartwell's Southwest Food Service Excellence, and Taher. On March 23rd, an evaluation team was selected and the TDA scoring rubric was completed. The committee met March 31st to discuss scoring and to select vendor recommendations. All evaluations were then sent to TDA for approval, and this evening, we are recommending the board approve the award of this contract to Taher.
Discussion from the board? This time I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Taher be awarded the contract for food service management, for food service management services for the 2023, 2024 school year as presented.
Second?
Second.
We have a second? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Edgar, appreciate it. All right, this time we will consider approval of educational affirmation agreement between the Eastern New Mexico University Speech and Hearing Rehabilitation Outreach Center and Bastrop ISD. Derek Eberle, Director of Special Programs and Services, welcome.
Good evening, School Board. Welcome, Trustee Ruiz. Tonight, I have the affiliation agreement between Eastern New Mexico State for the placement of practicum students. These are clinical rotations, and so we like these agreements with universities. We get speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists. I'm an opportunity for their students to come to our schools and shadow and watch our providers, and it's a great opportunity for us to form good relationships with these folks and hopefully recruit them to stay around in Bastrop ISD. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board, Trustee Ruiz? I think this might be a great opportunity to break the ice for a motion for you.
I move to approve the educational affiliation agreement between Eastern New Mexico University Speech and Hearing Rehabilitation Outreach Center and Bastrop ISD as presented.
Have a second? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving along, we consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between BISD and Ascension Seaton and Austin Community College. Amanda Brantley, Director of College Career and Military Readiness, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Edwards and members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm bringing to you a memorandum of understanding that's a three-way agreement between us, Ascension Seaton, and Austin Community College. What this will do is allow for Ascension Seaton staff to serve in an advisory capacity for our PTEC program in health science, including recommending certifications, coursework, and work-based learning. It will also give them the opportunity to provide work-based learning for all of our PTEC students in grades nine through 12, including job shadowing, internships, and site visits. ACC will provide courses in pharmacy technician, which is a certification that these students will earn after four years in the program. And Bastrop ISD will recruit students and provide wraparound support for all of the students within the PTEC program. I recommend that the board approve memorandum of understanding as presented.
Any discussion from the board? I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the educational affiliation agreement between, I'm sorry, went backwards. I move to approve memorandum of understanding between Bastrop ISD, Ascension Seaton, and Austin Community College for PTEC Health Science Academy as presented.
We have a motion? We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving along. Ms. Brantley, come back up, please. We're going to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between Texas Parks and Wildlife and Bastrop ISD.
All right, so this next MOU will allow our internship program, which we will be in our third year with Bastrop ISD, to enter into placements of students with Texas Parks and Wildlife. Through this, Parks and Wildlife will provide 50% of the student intern salary, up to 40 hours for six students. The remainder will be paid by the grant that we're lucky to be in our fourth year of receiving from TEA for our CTE summer program. And I, again, I recommend that the board approve the MOU as presented.
Any discussion from the board? Entertain a motion at this time?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Texas Parks and Wildlife and Bastrop ISD as presented.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Brantley, for being here this evening. All right, moving along, we have some other information items, as in board's calendar enrollment, Central Appraisal District 2024 proposed budget, and single budget purchases more than $50,000, which leads us into closed session. The board will now convene into closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on our agenda this evening, as followed by the Texas Government Code 551.074 term and probationary contracts of teachers. No voting will take place in this closed meeting. Any actions of the board, any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. It is now 6:51, and we will go into closed session. It is now 6:51, and we will go into closed session.